Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, thank you for having me. Let's get started from the corner and then we'll return Friday. The last one, this is even according to your seat. So just prior to your meeting, this meeting was over in the middle of your between that and advertising, the technical section. And some of the votes, that would be the topic on, is on the coming up. Um, so you will note that there are several councilors in this the whole of the business to try to, I very much, they continue using the product by vertical, you know, other councilors. We've done people for. Yeah, so at this time, we think that we're doing great. Everybody, thank you for every person to the topic. I'd like to say this one of them. For all of the present persons or my excuse, bless everyone. Uh, the, the method that we're here to conduct the business process for the line with, uh, people that, uh, that have been citizens who have their, uh, their. You know, feeling very strange, but like you really succeed by the United States of America. And so there are a lot of these things, um, nation, not at all. We just want to, we want to keep that. Fully working. You.
Well, I'm for the man out of the, you know, CEO and people that are all practicing. What's prior to.
Okay. Okay, then. Okay.
What matter of course, this is after my father. What?
After. And over football, you can. Two hundred and fifty. Yeah, we have got here, uh, another line, and you're. What that, yeah, that's. Well, I don't know. This conversation, yeah. What, please?
Okay. We don't have a lot to speak of this year, and prepare us. Come on, let's see. And that's a good one. I don't know, it's total, obviously, it's like, I'm not saying that they actually down there, ever that was, um, that's what is number one. But there's something to make you want down. I learned about it times, uh, other, you know, walking around, but I stayed, I, um, but that's a very, uh, whole, uh, of the open. But since I'm allowed to now, I'm going to go over for the cash restaurant, I would have picked it for some tentative, uh, to, uh, so you have some reasons I would, I would work on that. Um, so definitely from how you're like, I see, see what's up there. We have a very young, uh, student there on high school that they lost here. And they are, they're, so they're, they're working at classes. So they're maybe not best, best. Um, and next week also, we are going to sell their schoolers in the anniversary. During the party events, so he's okay. The store online, we're gonna have a little presentation for the, so anyone who comes to come and stop in, if you're, uh, uh. I'm making sure I, uh, this is going to go, and it's often very sorry already. Uh, first, I find the students really a lot of, um, and really a lot of things that, um, some of the logistics, but it was great, they always were a lot of people. They were just like expressions of the best, honestly, particularly those that are passing. Um, they helped to help themselves. So we had a first thing that we had where we found ourselves, especially in the question, we found each other's place from our channels. And we, we're starting somewhere here, so what are the axes that make them and next to you? Uh, one is checking the procedure, kind of, so a little faster for the members to help. We're also looking for that, that has to, uh, be, uh, to, to, and, uh, preparation that needs to be done again, and sometimes that's a, for the event. Uh, and we decided that has some two or three of us going to stand, they're asking about toward the university, so I have some questions and, and basically their comments, right? Like, I, I had so, first thing, you know, call owners, that's important, allowing to interact with the students, ask questions, to kind of people, be as conversation with people, or other, so, and it'll be on their side. We created a business committee that we went on to go and, and, and across our house line, and we might have our meaningful party, and, and early that, we are presenting with, so, yeah, I had a miss that sounds sound, I'm trying, because I traded in there. So we had some language tips, nice to know, uh, short presentation letters, breaks to, and, and I think of the chances, and, and to the area, and also a couple of things that we see in the best, uh, yeah, probably, that, that, that's. Uh, and then, and a couple of days later, our meeting, uh, had a first group of that needs, uh, the, uh, fourteen west, which is, I don't know if you know that, but I've heard in like, the surrounding, this summer, we, uh, people, uh, to, to, all, we need, we have, and we think that, uh, so we do that a lot, so, um, and, and also more coming from you, and we can show the topic, but, uh, more of your continued this conference, to continue, uh, that, uh, maybe you can, so, uh, we're gonna do some, uh, I think I heard you guys here, and, and I definitely want to incorporate the business and the street to, uh, especially outside, that we're going to talk about, that, uh, I would like to comment. We presented one of those that we had just one tape, uh, I put it on, and want to, I hear this, uh, for, for other people. Next week, we want to do this, and, and, uh, originally, I think this time, all speaking together, uh, my, my, I'm really studying, I don't know, too far, I rest on the page, and stuff, so, yeah, I know that, fine, that's, okay, she's opening around a lot, she's, if people, uh, having someone, uh, uh, just like, um, she was probably excited to, uh, check this out, last week, or, uh, I'm, I'm, so, I'm, everybody, I'm sorry. Um, are we all raising the status? Well, we presented everything I had, I had last part session, honestly, that question was, you know, coming to, we kind of call it with that, uh, legally, uh, this, uh, first public, uh, the next week, our, 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 so now we're actually calling other tenants, uh, to work, and there's, we're, and, 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 and I was submitted to all of our, I, 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 um, but yeah, definitely, it presents the questions that, um, I'm, 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 next one, like, I don't know, I'm talking about numbers, or, or, I mean, that's me.
Thank you. And.
All right. I'm, 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 I'm. You know. I can't read any of this. There's a thing, it's important. But I was, you're, 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 you're asked, but you say, we're standing there, we're, 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 and, 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 and as we were, but, 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 but. There was a few, some, uh, you, 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 you already have asked me. And, and.
Yeah, yeah. Bye. Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm. That the, that, 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 I think this next, uh, I'm already, like, I'm, 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 yeah, we, we need a, or, uh, or we know, we can, 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 we[735.91]
So a lot of hundreds in Europe. And so the common glass is in the are probably the natural progression of that. This climate. Are most of our colleagues are actually little tiny. I got three second question. Why am I teaching more? Is a different grand job. They have any son that is pretty funny. All these little tiny. Those are. I just heard a news report. Then. It becomes one of the. Probably it's happened.
So you know with me, this has a format a little bit different. For. We had. A hundred and sixty. Counterstop. Of that seven nine. Which we were working on. And five hundred. We could be like a repair. There's a. We're here today to talk. Vehicle crashes, we had three. Zero injuries. One was. You're. Not a part one for anything or less. There are. About two times we have. I'm on the floor first of all. Hundred and sixty five. Even. One. Assist operations. Seven. Three hundred and seventy five. Here would be. Parting enforcement twenty four. It was great. Or five hundred and seventy. Before. Um, we have twenty six west. The grand. Other incidents. Um, the quality of. Building tech. Three hundred and forty for long. Two thousand. Which they just. All according eight hundred. Six. For long. College. On the day. Twelve thousand two hundred. Again, first of all. I'm going forward in the. At two hundred five. This one. That is what I wanted to do. At what if you want. They work with you more. We don't have to. They were created to make. Well. They were incredibly low. It was almost. The real incident. And then. Also thank you. The place of mine has had a. There are really two important objects. Our. The issue is. There's this. Also. Public. We think about. They also. The department. Managing. The storage guy who. Very good. Number two. Last month. What is the other. Yeah, just. This is all about. Yes, I do have a report together. I want to confuse that. Work session. The three lines. Places where power could stand. Uh, the highest form was. The highway work. A lot of that was done at the hero members. Uh, brush correction, stuff like that. Uh, the next highest report. We're getting. There's a lot of. Part of the people. Uh, from May. Show them. How we did with the. The cast. They, of course. We had a little bit of dirt work to get. Take care of that. Some different tactics. And persons. Uh, I did get all the parts up. On the home screen. And, uh. The other big area was. We had one guy out for a. Roof replacement. Last thing he had a deep up to a. Yeah. For the million forty. His back. Yes. He took that one. Oh, fuck. Good back door. It's pretty. We want the whole song. One. Just. You know. Well, we didn't care that storm rain. Long and wide on that sinkhole. That was. Pretty easy. Looks like a hole. For. The term. Flat top. The example. He was. I think. You put for. Not gonna talk for the. We can just first start. I'm okay. The part of. And one, one thing I'd love to. For the. Waiting for that. They ordered some. Fancy. Coming. Much. Look, I'm looking to. Just for the order. Yes. They're not there yet. Let's see where they are. Seth had a hard time finding. So. And we're only need that, that. Sculptor. And the useful. Because we caught. There's. I mean, they just. But I mean, neither. Because. The ball is on. I mean, I meant with the. Your comfort. And that's. A little bit of. It's like. Yes, okay. Something that you. And then. Yes.
Yes, thank you. I have stupid in my report. Um, two matters on my report are. They're identified under the business section of. The general. I'd just like to highlight. One item in my report is number five, which you see. Waste order treatment. That were. Big that were approved at the work session. That contract is. Uh, prepared. Reviewed by the SCARO and. And executed. They have, uh, provided. One. Required by that agreement. Uh, in basically like all your. If it's. Nothing. Well, thank you. And you were interested. To the. The people I can take.
For the commission of recreation. Seems to be where I spend the majority of my time right now. And, um. Really, really. And we had sixteen hundred and thirty eight people that. Like scan into the pool. Not very many people each day, I don't know, but. Fifteen hundred and thirteen people up in the door. Um, which is fantastic. Our membership sales are catching up. We're seeing more. For. Some of the. This program that we launched this year. And it did become. Because. So we're hoping. This is what he just tried to make. I'm not feeling. It was. So. Um. Things that we've been working on. The goal is right. Kind of. I don't know. I think it's. Probably. Two better. He's going to be a lot. See for. So three AM. And I'm here for over. Please. With. We'll be. The worst position. Um, you're the face. Right. Or the filling kind of. So that'll go out in our hope with. To have some surveying. The coverage. You'll be seeing a little bit more of. Twenty five. Yeah. Um, you'll be seeing more of them. Here's.
I don't think.
I mean, it's.
Beautiful. Pretty.
You know. Uh, sorry. Um, sign up for. If you guys please. I wouldn't get over. Uh, I'm. I mean, I can. I can. I don't know. So. Okay. This is. Um. When I just. And when I. We asked. And that's. But I'm going there with. Um, so they came out. And if it is. When they were. So I. Thank you. Um. About. Um. Having that the trees. When you come down from the remains on our. Like stop signs. Can only come. That's true. It's. Absolutely. I don't. Want. My undergator asked me, oh, is that a camera? It's on a property. I think so. Property. What did we do about it? Um. And also. I'm trying to. Finish that. The. Brush. I know. But do we have a. I mean, sometimes after they come to help the brush. Then there's a pile on the way. In the street.
Or.
Right, it's only going forever. And I'm just wondering, is there something? I'm kind of just wondering down the road, down the road. And some of the other streets. In these piles and brush. I'm just wondering if there's something. I'm curious. Please come and play out the brush the minute. I would take out. Because it's not going to be taken out again. It goes on the following line. So it's. It's there for months. Until the next day. So if. I know. I just heard. That talent down. It's going to. Put, um. Give everybody a warning. If you put your brush down. Warning. Don't put your brush down until something starts to. Say. If they have to come back. You're. But then the brush down. Especially in the street. If it's in your driveway. Fine. Or someone. I'm just feeling. I've had several people complain to me about. Why is all this brush sitting? I'm going to see people putting him. Yeah. Please. Thank you. Not wait to go.
What's your name?
Hey, no, it's. Um, never more is too. That's. Yeah, but the. Um, it's like running. Only one. Just to. Or maybe. Is there a kind of. Like for the noise.
Very. We have. We're not prepared to discuss it now. We can look at it for. There isn't voice for this.
I turned the clock around.
Ten.
I wanted down. I think. The power is off.
Things like. We. It seems like a cooperative.
She's behind my husband. He's down the block before he's. The noise is too much. He always.
There is a noise. But. We. I feel like they don't. A lot of times. How we have. The council. That's. A lot of it. So. Yeah. Thanks for that. Sorry. That's. That's the fun. Wow. And. And. I'm. Comment. We have just. Two. Mr. President. Alex. You're doing well. Very much so.
Yes, thank you. Um, for you this evening is, uh, it's a minor. I just want a minor. Subdivision and. Just by way of background, this. This property at thirty five. Reliance Road. The Paklak property. It's at the corner of. Reliance Road and. Riley's real place. We did receive subdivision approval back in. September of twenty twenty three. Um, at the time of the approval by council. Uh, there is a preferred. Item. Uh, on the approval for the number of street trees. So this plan, uh, supplements that. Um. Subdivision, uh, approval. Um, Mr. Paklak is asking for council to approve that. Um, and approve a waiver. Uh, for the number of street trees that was required. By. Borough. Scout. Uh, he's asking for a waiver of the seven street trees that are required. At four hundred and ninety five dollars. Pieces. Um, and the borough will be paid three thousand two hundred and sixty five dollars. Towards. As a fee of lieu. Uh, instead of planning those two trees. Uh, the property was subdivided in three parcels. So the configuration of those lots are. Uh, real problematic for all the trees and buffering. Required, so. Um, we did work with his. Uh, his engineer, planning commission. Uh, to come up with a plan that was acceptable. So then, uh, the planning commission do recommend. Uh, council approve this. The plan. Uh, we was in. At the may meeting. The may staff committee. We're. That's the background on it. There is a motion. Council is inclined to. Prove. The vice man. So that's the background on. Presenting questions.
You also.
I apologize. I'm.
I'm. This is quite a. We have. What we can. For. It's. They all do. There's a motion to approve. The. In the. For. Twenty twenty three. Providing. Unit one six. Twenty twenty five. Insisting on one sheet. For. Eleven. My point is. Subdivision public. For the valley located at thirty five. Provided for. T N P. Twenty one dash zero zero. Dash zero six. One zero four. Dash. Zero zero. Dash four. Along with. Google. Street. Letter from zero. At four hundred and ninety five dollars. Revenue. For a total of three thousand four hundred and sixty five dollars. Which is consistent. For. Salado requirement. In which the park applies to all. Some of the. Rules. And there's no more. Security. For people. Yeah, it's. I'm sorry. At least I said. Okay. I will tell you. I have a motion for this. Possible. To. To approve. Of the requirement. And. We have. From. According to. Free access. Are there any clarification? I think. Where. These. On. But I. I think. Follow. Hey. So, um. The. My. It's called. Process of. That's. Forty. Was less than. They're completely. Come back. That has a sergeant. True. I think we don't have. Okay. Four. What? Or. You know. The. We're going to really. We. The day. Do you want to? Do you want to introduce yourself briefly tonight? I thought. That's one. That's. But, um. I'm. The. So. A lot of things. Actually. I'm actually saying. That. I'm. Appreciate. But. Thank you. Thank you. This is. What is. He's excellent. And that's. We. Over. The person that comes. We're really. Welcome. Behind the corner. That's.
What they. Interesting. What I'm.
Right. All. With. My. The. Talking. For. It's cool. I think. I'm just. Watching.